Time is now seven thirty-one. And the meeting is now called to order. Please stand and follow Commissioner Austin. Roll call, please. Yes, Commissioners Janicek and Vaschani are excused. Commissioner Austin.
Here.
Rose.
Here.
Scheffler.
Here.
Stahira.
Here.
Chair Brown.
Here.
So the next item on the agenda is approval of the minutes from the regular meeting on August the, oh gosh, when was the last? Oh, we have no minutes today. Okay.
Staff will be bringing those forward to the next meeting.
Okay. At this time, citizens who wish to discuss any items not on the agenda may speak to the Commission. As a reminder, the Commission may not discuss or vote on items not on the agenda, but we can take this information and use it to inform future deliberations or requests to city staff. So does anyone wish to speak? Okay, so we don't have any speakers, so the public input portion of the meeting is now closed. So now we're moving on to public hearings. The first item is Public Hearing Item One, Conditional Use Permit CUP 2025-0007. It's four-four-eight West Foothill Boulevard. The applicant is Rico's Fiesta Mexican Restaurant.
Thank you, Chair. This public hearing was opened at the last Planning Commission meeting on August thirteenth and continued to this meeting. At this time, the applicant is requesting more time to revise the floor plan, and staff recommends that the Commission continue this public hearing to the next Planning Commission meeting on October fifteenth. And at this time, it would be appropriate to see if there are any members of the audience who wish to comment on this item.
Okay, so do we have any members of the public who'd like to speak? No? So we're, do we close?
No, so we do not close the public hearing.
I'll move to continue to the October fifteenth, two thousand twenty-five meeting. A second.
Roll call. Commissioner Austin.
Yes.
Rose.
Yes.
Scheffler.
Yes.
Stahira.
Yes.
Chair Brown.
Yes.
Okay, so now we're moving on to Public Hearing Item Number Two, which is a Conditional Use Permit CUP 2025-0008, in connection with four-oh-nine South Myrtle Avenue for Senna on Myrtle. The applicant is Senna on Myrtle, Joseph Caill, I'm sorry, C-A-I-E-L-L-O. I don't want to mispronounce the name. Can we please have the staff report for this item, please?
Yes, thank you, Chair, and good evening Commissioners. Tonight before you, we have a conditional use permit to allow live entertainment, both indoors and outdoors, in existing restaurants and on Myrtle at four-oh-nine South Myrtle Avenue, and the applicant is Joseph Cailllo. So the subject site is located on the four-hundred block of South Myrtle Avenue on the west side of the street between West Lemon, I'm sorry, West Lime Avenue and West Lemon Avenue, and is located in the HCD, Historic Commercial Downtown Zone. And as a bit of background for this subject site, it was formerly occupied by Sierra Cup. It was a kind of a quick-service coffee shop restaurant, and they received an outdoor live entertainment CUP in two thousand eight to provide small performances on a stage in the rear patio dining area, and that was into the evening hours until eleven P.M. nightly. Forwarded two thousand ten, Senna, the subject applicant, took over the business, and that same year, applied for a Type forty-seven ABC license. This is a full liquor for both beer, wine, and distilled spirits. However, as part of that CUP approval, a condition of approval, specifically Condition Number Five of that CUP, was included that indicated that all previous CUP approvals were null and void, thus eliminating that previous live entertainment. However, the applicant was under the assumption that the previous live entertainment CUP was in place, and that they had been operating live entertainment since that time. Upon recent review and confirmation by staff, it was confirmed that that previous CUP was not active, and the applicant is now requesting a new CUP to reactivate that live entertainment, more as an administrative cleanup item, which is why it's before you here tonight. As the Commission may know, specifically, Monrovia Municipal Code Section seventeen-point-four-four-zero-five-five requires applicants that are proposing live entertainment to obtain a conditional use permit. And the CUP process would allow the city to place conditions on entertainment activities to prevent potential impacts related to noise, crowding, or extended hours of operation that could become incompatible with nearby uses. And the Planning Commission has authority to review and approve the CUP, subject to the findings of approval, as you see there, mostly again related to noise and public disturbance, and to make sure that it's not going to create adverse impacts to the surrounding area, which is why it's before you here tonight. So Senna on Myrtle, again, four-oh-nine South Myrtle Avenue, it is a very unique location. It's actually one of the few locations within the downtown area that has a rear outdoor patio for dining. The subject's site features both an indoor and outdoor dining area. The rear patio is semi-enclosed with no roof. Although this area is classified as outdoor seating, the rear patio is located at the back of the building and is fully enclosed on all sides except for above, which does distinguish it from typical front-facing sidewalk dining areas that found along Myrtle Avenue. It should also be noted that the majority of the business's usable floor area is within this rear patio dining area as well. Now, their current hours of operation for the business is six A.M. to two A.M. daily, and their outdoor alcohol service hours are currently Sunday through Thursday from six to eleven P.M., and Friday and Saturday from six A.M. to twelve midnight. So the subject applicant is requesting live entertainment at the location, both again indoors and outdoors. It would feature either a solo DJ or a small band, typically of one to three performers. They would be maxed at two performances per day. Now, this would be again either indoor or outdoor, but not simultaneously, or at the same time. A typical DJ setup would most likely include a turntable, computer, and some small speakers. If a small band is performing, they may bring musical instruments, a small amplifier, and one or two microphones. It should be noted that the proposed entertainment request is to provide incidental ambiance music to patrons. This is not a rock and roll concert. They have no intention of doing so. You know, they hoping to have, which I'll get to you in just a second, but hours of operation, to have like a brunch kind of ambiance background music, maybe with a DJ playing some, you know, mixing a few tracks here and there for lunches and things like that, and then at night, maybe with a little livelier crowd, you know, in the evening hours. The proposed rear outdoor patio, so this is the out, the back patio section, are proposed from ten A.M. to eleven P.M. daily. The proposed indoor live entertainment hours would be Monday through Thursday from ten A.M. to eleven P.M., Fridays through Sundays, and certain holidays, which I've listed in my staff report, between ten A.M. and one-thirty A.M., with again full closure of the restaurant at two A.M., as they're allowed. Now, staff did compare previous CUP approvals that were approved by the Planning Commission of other locations in downtown that have live entertainment. Just to highlight a few, London's was approved in two thousand ten, which allows it to go indoors until midnight. Salad Bistro, which became seventeen-seventy-six and is now the state, they were approved in two thousand sixteen. They were allowed indoor live entertainment until two A.M. The Poorhouse, no longer in service, but they were approved in two thousand sixteen until one A.M. for indoor entertainment, and then Nightcap was approved two thousand twenty-three until midnight, and then most recently, the Crimson, which has not yet opened, that's more of like a jazz club, they were approved by the Commission until midnight, and this was just last year in two thousand twenty-four, to kind of give a comparison of hours that have been previously approved. As for the proposed floor plan, as shown, on the right-hand side, we have South Myrtle Avenue and their front entrance. The existing restaurant has a total of eighty-two seats. That's forty indoor and forty-two outdoor. As shown in the plan, the indoor performance area would be located right off to the right-hand side as soon as you walk in the business, and it would utilize a five-foot-by-five-foot area. This is twenty-five square feet, where again typically they use a DJ or the option for a small band would perform. The outdoor area is as you walk along through this kind of hallway, past the back of house, kitchen, and restrooms, once you hit that outdoor patio with the door here, it would be also to the right-hand side right as you walk out. Again, it should be noted, no permanent stage is proposed. It should just be on the ground, and we do have conditions of approval, which will come up here in a second, that would be limiting to the performances to this particular areas at this particular size, as well as limiting the hours as they have proposed them, and most importantly, that all of the doors and windows be closed at all times during all performances, whether it's indoors or outdoors. So this is just showing those two performance areas on, as we look on the slide, on the left-hand side, as you walk in the business, you can see the bar seating here. The indoor performance area would be located right here, whereas if you go on the outdoor, again, you walk down the hallway, here's the door to, between the inside and outside, you look right and where exactly where this table is, which would obviously be moved, that is where the small performance area for the outdoor portion would be located. So staff has recommended a number of conditions of approval, and we've broken down into a couple of different areas for you, specifically first, starting off with noise control. So limiting the hours of entertainment are, would be limited as follows per the staff report. So again, the outdoor portion at the back of the building for live entertainment would be limited to eleven P.M. daily, between ten A.M. and eleven P.M. The indoor portion would be weekdays, which is typically Monday through Thursday, from ten A.M. to eleven P.M., and then Fridays through Sundays, and again, the select holidays that they have requested, from ten A.M. to one-thirty A.M., with again their full closure by two. We are limiting the maximum of two performances per day with a maximum of three performers, that the live entertainment should not be audible outside the boundaries of the building, and operate in alignment with all of the municipal code requirements regarding noise and vibration. And again, the doors and windows would need to be remain closed at all times during any live entertainment, again, whether it's indoors or outdoors. We've also limited the terms of location and the frequency, so again, no change in the proposed floor plan. Any proposed expansion would require an amendment to the CUP. Live entertainment would be limited to the five-by-five square foot area, as indicated on the proposed floor plan. Now, the DRC does have review authority to modify these hours, and they could also bring it back to, or kick it up to Planning Commission if they so choose. With regards to public safety measures, this has been consistent with most of our entertainment proposals. There'd be no dancing is permitted, no standing room only, no use of pyrotechnics, smoke machines, or anything in the light, things that could cause fire. Exterior does not have to remain well-lit and promote visibility and security, so staff would review any sort of window coverings or anything if that were proposed to a later date. We've also added a few standard conditions of approval, so this, like most CUPs, we have a hundred and eighty days to have it come back for review. Also, if there's any issues, it can always come back before either the DRC or the Planning Commission if any issues arise regarding noise, complaints, what have you. So this did go to DRC originally in August of two thousand twenty-five as an advisory view. They did make a recommendation to Planning Commission. Now, it should be noted that the request initially was limited to indoor live entertainment, which they reviewed. Some of the discussion from DRC mostly related to ADA compliance and clearances, which they wouldn't be required to meet, so, you know, anywhere in front of the performance areas would have to remain clear in case there are emergencies or for ADA persons. Comparisons again, other businesses, which I have pointed out, that there has been a range of approvals from the Commission, ranging between ten P.M. at night up to two A.M., depending on the business in question, and that confirmation that the kitchen would remain open during all live entertainment hours, which it would. Now, following the DRC meeting, applicant's second representative, I believe Nikki is within the audience tonight, but Ashawn Spencer, who's also representative of the project, contacted city staff to request that the live entertainment option be expanded to allow for occasional outdoor use on the rear patio, which is what I brought before you tonight. We did evaluate that request and revised the proposed conditions to allow again indoor or outdoor, but not simultaneously, and that we limited the hours of the patio to what has been previously approved in the past, specifically at this location, up to eleven P.M. for the outdoor portion only. Following to tonight's Planning Commission meeting, we did send a public notice, a public postcard, a postcard was mailed within a three-hundred-foot radius, and a newspaper notice. We did receive two public comments from residences. One of them was not necessarily opposed, however, they did indicate that the sound should be managed. They previously experienced some disruptive music from other restaurants along Myrtle. It was also mentioned that back in COVID days, when everyone was dining outside, it was much louder at that time. Another one had concerns specifically again regarding late-night entertainment until one-thirty on weekends, and additional concerns about drinking and driving, failure to stop at stop signs, and fighting within nearby city public parking lots. I did personally contact both of those residences. Once I kind of explained that we would be limiting the outdoor hours, they seemed more amenable to it. Just want to make sure that it is looked at closely and monitored to make sure that issues don't arise or cause excessive noise issues, and again, with the conditions in place, staff feels that would recommend approval, along with the DRC's recommendation to approve it with the conditions as listed. That does conclude my staff report. I am happy to answer any questions, and Nikki, the representative, is also here if you have any questions. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any clarifying questions from Commissioners regarding the staff report?
I have a question about on Data Sheet One, number nine. I'm just a little confused. It says, "No cover charge. To enter the restaurant shall be permitted." This condition does not preclude the applicant from charging an entertainment fee. Isn't an entertainment fee a cover charge?
So to clarify, this is similar to what was approved for the Crimson.
I understood, and I understood that, and that's a little bit different, I think.
We're applying it more as a standard condition, so that you can't charge to just enter the building and sit down and have a meal, you know, just kind of only showing up for live entertainment sort of thing. Now, that doesn't eliminate the ownership from charging another fee on that bill if you're there during live entertainment.
Then I don't think that that's a restaurant, then. I think that that's more like a Crimson. I, I, I don't think that that's fair to people coming into the restaurant. I can't, I can't plug my ears and not hear the entertainment so that I don't get charged the fee. I mean, that needs to be made very clear to people coming in, and personally, I think it's going to hurt them.
So I, I would defer to, yeah, I would defer to the applicant. I don't think it's their intent to charge any fee. We've, we've added that condition of approval as more of a safety.
Maybe that needs to be addressed to the applicant, then. Okay. I was just wanting clarification from you, but when the applicant comes up. Thank you.
Thank you, Austin. That was a good report. Bear with me here. Couple of clarifications. On the hours of operation, are patrons in the building for twenty hours, because it's from six A.M. to two A.M. they're open to serving food? Or did I, did I misunderstand that? There's people in the building preparing, or are the patrons in there at six A.M.?
So there, those are the approved hours that they have, that has been approved, so they could open at six A.M. I don't believe they currently open. I think most of the days, they open around ten or eleven o'clock, depending on the day, but they have the opportunity to open at six A.M. if they wanted to come for a breakfast or.
That's a general statement. They're not necessarily open for that. So how is, how is the policing or controlling knowing there's only two, and there's not that's simultaneously going on? How, how is that handled? And the follow-up would be, so if there is a complaint, Joe Public complains, how does it get to you? So if somebody calls up, and I assume they talk to the police department, and does the city have a mechanism in place to handle that, where you guys get the feedback from the police department, and, yeah, we went over a couple of times to X?
So to answer the first part of your question, and correct me if I'm wrong, that the, the, the police department, so depending on the time at which the complaint is received, so if, if staff is not in, you know, during city hours.
During normal business hours.
During normal business hours, I mean, they can always call the planning department if there is an issue, or, and more importantly, more than likely, it would be code enforcement. Similarly, I mean, code enforcement does do sweeps at times to ensure people are meeting their code, their conditions of approval. In addition to, again, one, one of two of the conditions of approval is, this does go back for review within a hundred and eighty days, that'd be six months, from the use commencing, to see and make sure that they're operating appropriately, and if we have received any complaints, which we would again verify with PD, and they're also subject to review and approval yearly on their alcohol license, in which case, if live entertainment is also part of that, we typically include that as well as part of the review.
So there's, if I understand it, there, there is a mechanism in place that somehow gets to code enforcement if it's on after-hours or weekends. Another question, holidays. What's considered a holiday and what isn't?
So the applicant has requested certain days may not necessarily be a quote-unquote holiday, so July fourth is a holiday, however, they've requested July third, because a lot of the times, people extend that kind of holiday, similar to Christmas Eve and Christmas Day, Thanksgiving, which Thanksgiving Eve isn't necessarily a thing, but Black Friday is, so I think they've requested kind of the leading into a holiday as part of their request for, as a holiday day.
So it's in addition to what we would consider a holiday. Those are additional days, but that's not spelled out in the.
They're listing the conditions of approval in the staff report.
Are they?
For saving of space on the PowerPoint tonight.
Condition number four.
Okay, okay. I apologize, I probably read it, but that would seem like an add-on there that I missed. Okay, well, thank you.
Austin, if I understood you, you said they were operating with music, thinking that the old CUP was, was current for them?
Well, until we made them aware semi-recently, yes.
Okay, so the only question I would have, did they ever have complaints from neighbors?
I've checked within.
Did they have complaints from people that lived behind Senna?
There have been, I've checked with PD, there have not been any complaints this calendar year.
How long ago did they operate with music?
I would say since two thousand ten.
Okay, thank you.
Just a clarification on, so outdoor entertainment is approved, but only for the back patio area? There would be no outdoor use of, say, the area right in front of the restaurant on the sidewalk?
So they're already pre-approved, or have already been approved for outdoor dining out there, but, but no outdoor entertainment in that area, only in the back patio?
Great. Thank you. Oh, sorry, I have one more clarification. So I think the way that the noise controls work, I believe you said it earlier, is the entertainment shouldn't be audible beyond the property lines. Is that really possible, given the configuration of this back patio? I mean, it's open to the, to the, to the sky.
It is open to the sky. They are still going to have to be within the noise ordinance limits per the decibels, as indicated in the municipal code. I think that's, that is why we have limited to eleven P.M., which is what was, has been previously approved in the past for this location, so it is not really changing what was previously approved, but limiting the hours so that it's not super late at night and disturbing residences within, you know, within a certain amount of feet. I think the closest residence would be off of Lemon, within just about three hundred
Any more clarification questions?
Oh, and just one more. You mentioned London was approved until what hour? I just missed that one.
Till midnight.
Great, thanks.
I apologize, Austin. Outdoor music. We talked about indoor music at all those locations, correct? All those aforementioned. Is there any precedent for outdoor music in the time?
Could clarify, are you asking if there's current outdoor music?
So you, in your presentation, which I thought was concise, but you talked about indoor music on all the other options. We didn't talk about outdoor music, or did I miss that? Because there's, is there an example, like Restaurant X goes to two A.M.?
So the subject property, four-oh-nine, before it became Senna, was approved for outdoor music in the same patio area on a permanent stage till eleven P.M. every day of the week.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Any more clarification questions? No? Okay, so now we're going to move on to the public testimony portion. So this is a time and place for public input regarding Public Hearing Item Number Two. So we will accept testimony in the following order, from the applicant, persons in favor, persons with concerns, and then the applicant will have a chance to respond if necessary. So I believe the applicant is here, so please come to the podium, state your name for the record.
Hi, I'm Nikki Cailllo. I'm Joe's daughter, and I'm the general manager of Senna for the last ten years. I have some notes from some of the questions that you brought up. As far as opening early, I know that our, our conditions allow six A.M. The last time that we opened that early was for the World Cup. We opened at seven A.M. That was in November two thousand twenty-two, so that is not something that, that we do if there was a special game that morning. We opened, and it was great fun. The police department walks through every weekend, every Friday and Saturday night. They walk through at least once or twice a night, and I always feel great when they do that. I love seeing presence. Everyone sits up a little bit taller when they come walking through, and it, it just, it's a great thing, and I've told them that as much as I can, like, please continue to do this, it's so good. It just keeps everyone like feeling like they're being watched and kind of like this behavior thing. The outdoor, our, our reason, I just want to kind of make a little bit more sense with the outdoor portion of the permit. We book the back patio for parties up to seventy people. One of the questions that comes up a lot is, can we bring a DJ for our party? So it's not me promoting entertainment in the back patio, it's for guests that want to have the option. The last time that I had a party, book, book the patio and bring a DJ, that was in November two thousand twenty-four, and that was for a retirement party. It's not like a crazy party area dance thing going on for the public, it's really quite private. The back of the patio is enclosed, obviously, and behind our, our patio is the alley, which we actually have a private alley that is a, it's a turnoff from the main, sorry, from the main alley. So there's a main alley, and then way down there are some apartments down again, so it's like three turns, and behind us is nothing. It's just a dead-end little alley with a four, four-story building on the other side of our alley, so it's, it's quite private. I don't have any intention in the future of bringing in any sort of entertainment for the public back there. Also, to answer your question about the cover charges, no intention of charging a cover charge or an entertainment fee, that is not something on our radar. I don't have any intention of bringing anyone of that caliber, that type of entertainment. To answer your question about the coverage of the area, I think that's a little bit To answer your question about how long this has been going on, not to, this sounds kind of crazy, but we've had approximately 740 DJ sets since we opened. So this has been going on for quite a long time. We've not had any problems with it. I like to attribute it a little bit to the fact that our drink prices are higher than anyone else on our block. I think that it helps with riffraff late at night. I'm not trying to give away stuff for really cheap late at night, if they want to come, then they can, they can spend the money if they want to come out that late to see us. That's kind of my business thinking about it. And we did have, you know, we thought that we had that permit all this time until one of our neighbors was disgruntled and reported so many of their other businesses, so that's why we're here now.
Thank you, there's nothing further, we'll, oh, so. Okay.
So to clarify, your intent was to have the ability to have the outdoor music, it's not going to be something that you're going to be booking. It gave me shivers, I have to be honest, when you said 70 people outside. I've been to parties where I have 70 people and DJs and it's normally not quite. Not saying that's a bad thing, it normally isn't. And I've been there when London's had a temporary back, back thing on you. And that thing was blasting music through those corridors over there, so I'm familiar with it, it does that. But I just want to understand that, that it's something to, a value added if somebody wants to have a party. It's not going to be something that you're going to do every weekend or 4th of July, I could probably get away with this because it's noisy. So if I understand you, is that, that the genesis of your request?
Exactly, yes, and the, the makeshift patio that London has is, only has one wall, one solid wall with the little fencing that goes around the other three walls. Ours has four walls with a portion of it covered. And now we also have, what's it called, a partial covering over the rest of it.
Thank you again for talking to us. Just a question on the 1:30 AM end time. Do you have a case for going all the way till 1:30? If it was, say, something like midnight, like some of the other establishments, would that be a problem? Are you specifically seeking the 1:30 AM end date or end time?
I'm specifically seeking 1:30, yes, I don't want to change from what we've been doing. I haven't had any issues with the city or with the police department to continue our soirees to go till the end. So I would like to keep it 1:30.
Thanks.
Any other questions to the applicant? Okay, thank you. Thank you. Do we have any persons in favor who wish to speak? Persons with concerns? Okay, so we are going to close the public testimony portion, and now let's deliberate. Or are we just gonna, we can also move to a motion?
I was being a gentleman, letting everybody else go, since I, I do have concerns about outdoor late night. You know, I don't know what the perfect recipe is for the time. My experience is that I don't want to hear that at 2:00 in the morning, but, 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 but I don't think we have a recipe.
I think the outdoor was until 11:00 PM.
Yeah, 11:00. So I would, would.
Was it just till 11?
Yeah, it says outdoor until 11:00. It's indoor that goes to 1:30 AM.
So my concern would be controlling the front doors and the windows. And how that would be done, if there's indoor, indoor music, that would be a concern. And I would offer an amendment when we get to that point to number 19 to bring, which number 19 under general requirements is saying for 180 day, how we go either 90 or 120 days on that, if it's acceptable to the group, just to have a little bit of a review. On data sheet one, number 19, under general requirements.
I think I have another question when we're done with this. And maybe this is a question for staff. Have we, has anybody else asked to have entertainment until, you know, say, 1:00 or 1:30? And we ended up saying no and brought it back to an earlier time? I just can't recall.
I, I don't recall a denial of live entertainment at late night hours.
Cool, thank you.
Because we usually do reviews at six months.
Some are for 6, 90.
And I can see that, and maybe something needs to be added if you're getting a bunch of complaints, then, but then we move it up. I, I don't know.
That would be part of a CUP at that point, though, right?
Right, right.
You could review it at 90 days if there were problems.
Well, again, I would think that it'd be reviewed if we were getting complaints anyway, correct?
It could be brought back to DRC or us if there's that, but, but as it's stated now, it's a 180 day review.
Right, but as she said, she hasn't had problems and it's been, been 13 years.
If staff may, I apologize. There was some discussion at DRC if, if, if the review period should be brought to 90 days. And it was kind of discussed that it may be too short of a window to gain enough feedback from the general public to ascertain how much impact it really is having. So it was still recommended per the conditions as provided to you at 180, however, again, staff is willing to modify it.
Cooler months, the exterior outdoor ones might be a little less or the parties. But, but the applicant didn't say something like in November, there was a nice get together outside, so, but likewise, the windows could be more, it's beautiful in Monrovia in the summertime, you want the windows open on a restaurant and all that. That probably is more challenging for the restaurant, maybe a little less challenging in the colder months around here to have those windows and doors open when they're performing, but I don't know. I could, I could live with 120. That's why I said 90 or 120, I just thought it would be good, but you're, you're right, that, that could be a possibility where they, you know, doesn't give them a lot of time, maybe 90 is too short.
To give it a chance.
I just wanted to throw it out there if there was any, any feeling on it.
Just a clarification, if there happens to be a rash of noise complaints that happen in the next 30 days, there's nothing stopping DRC from considering an amendment to the conditions based on that feedback, right?
That's correct.
That's the beauty of a CUP.
So it's not like this review period is the only opportunity to make such a modification, if a modification is necessary, right?
That is, yeah, that is correct, and there's also a code enforcement process that involves education that can work up to citations that cost money to help enforce good behavior. And I think with Old Town, what we're finding is a lot of the businesses are self-regulating. They do let us know if someone else is not behaving, which is very helpful, too.
I think we have to, I think we have to give them a chance, you know.
So can I get clarification on, so for item 19, are we proposing the 120 or we're good with the 180 days? Just so I know whoever's, when we make the motion.
I'll move that or we amend it, but I won't be hurt feelings if we don't. But I just thought it was, because I've brought this up before and other commissioners have brought this up before. It wasn't something that we're trying to penalize them, it's just have a mechanism in there, but. I could live with it, but if it comes back, I told you so, then, then we'll have a greater, and I don't think we'll have a problem. We'll have a greater discussion on all those hours if it comes back typically like that, so I can live with that.
Leave it alone, okay, and then the outdoor, and just for clarification, excuse me, the indoor live entertainment, we're all good with the one, no one's proposing a change, okay. So we, you want to make a motion?
If staff may, did, did you want to modify the, or remove, I'm sorry, the condition regarding the cover charge?
Uh, yeah, if we, if we can, it would just take, it would just be to take off that.
The last sentence.
One part of that sentence.
Condition number nine, to remove the cover charge portion.
Yeah, yeah.
So I think we should keep the cover charge portion and remove the entertainment fee portion.
Exactly, exactly, remove the entertainment fee.
Move to approve CUP 2025, desk 008, with conditions as presented in the staff report, and you're going to change 19?
Yes, and modify condition 19 to remove the entertainment fee sentence from.
With the. That's number, that's number nine.
Number nine.
Eliminating, that's not 19.
That's nine.
That's nine, excuse me, nine, eliminating nine for the cover charge?
The condition will be modified to read, no cover charge to enter the restaurant shall be permitted. Period.
Okay, do we have a second?
I'll second.
Roll call, please. Commissioner Austin?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Schuffler?
Yes.
Stahira?
Yes.
Chair Brown?
Yes.
Motion passes, and Chair, if I'd like to read the appeal language, it's important to note that all items under the purview of the Planning Commission, which includes this one, may be appealed to the City Council if filed within writing, and an appeal fee does apply. And that has to be filed within 10 days of tonight's decision, thank you. Okay, moving along to agenda item PH3, which is a conditional use permit, CUP 2025-00009 for 110 East Colorado Boulevard, and the applicant is Megan Wentz for Barbecue Blues. Can we please have the staff report?
Yes, thank you again, Chair, and good evening again, Commissioners. We have another conditional use permit before you tonight to allow live entertainment, this is indoors only this time, at an existing restaurant, Barbecue Blues at 110 East Colorado Boulevard. And Megan Wentz, who is the manager of Barbecue Blues, is with us here tonight. So the subject site is located at 110 East Colorado Boulevard. This is just near the corner of East Colorado and South Myrtle, right next to the Saltner. And this is located in the PD5 Planned Development Area 5 Zone. This is a specific zoning designation area that is generally adjacent to the HCD Zone, which generally includes the side streets along Myrtle, and it supports a variety of uses that should be related to and of quality that represents Old Town. And as a bit of background, the subject site was previously formally occupied by 38 Degrees, the restaurant. And they had received two conditional use permits in 2014, one for also for a type 47, full liquor ABC license, and the other for late night operations also to, for. Now, fast forward to 2025, the current applicant has assumed operation of the restaurant and they reestablish it as Barbecue Blues in January of this year. Since it's been acquired, the restaurant has remained in compliance with both of those CUPs and are in good standing. The applicant is now requesting to add a new CUP to add incidental live entertainment for small band performances within that indoor dining area. And as I stated previously, the municipal code section 1744055 does require applicants that are proposing live entertainment to obtain a CUP. The CUP process allows the city to place conditions on entertainment activities to prevent potential impacts related to noise, crowding, or extended hours of operation that could become incompatible with nearby uses. The Planning Commission has authority to review and approve these CUP, subject to the findings of approval as listed, and that that would not create any adverse impacts to the surrounding area being before you tonight. So its current operations, they are allowed to be open 11:00 AM to 12:00 AM midnight on weekdays and weekends from 9:00 AM to 1:30 AM. They also have both an indoor and outdoor dining area, their outdoor dining area is in the front, similar to most other businesses along Myrtle Avenue. They have outdoor alcohol service hours, per again, that previous CUP approval. This would be, again, the front patio area, and those are limited from Sunday through Thursday, 6:00 AM to 11:00 PM, and Friday and Saturday from 6:00 AM to 12:00 AM midnight. And so the applicant is proposing to feature small musical performances indoors, again, up to two per evening, between the hours of 6:00 PM and 10:00 PM, generally consisting of blues or jazz performances by small groups, hence their name, Barbecue Blues. Entertainment would be incidental to the restaurant use, again, no fixed stage or separate admission charge is proposed. Similarly, staff did compare the previous CUP approvals with others in Old Town. Just again highlighting London's Salad Bistro, Poorhouse, Nightcap, and most recently, the Crimson, to name a few. Again, ranging in hours between 10:00 PM to up to 2:00 AM for indoor entertainment. So the proposed floor plan, the building is just over 4,000 square feet in size with a 240 square foot patio. It includes a main dining area with bar seating, kitchen, and storage area, and two restrooms. As you can see in the slide, the seating is proposed, I'm sorry, the current seating provided is a total of 101 patrons. That's 85 indoors and 16 outdoor. To accommodate the live entertainment, there'd be four sets of tables and chairs near their rear, as listed here in white. That would be removed temporarily to create a performance area of 144 square feet. This is a 12 foot by 12 foot area. Again, no raised stage or permanent stage is proposed. Instead, the performers would set up directly on the dining room floor with their equipment and would include musical instruments such as a small amplifier, speakers, and typically one to two microphones. Here's kind of a, just a close up view of the back of that indoor dining area of where the performance area, you can see the four tables and chairs that would be removed temporarily to accommodate the live entertainment. Again, this is similar to the previous request, this is an incidental proposed use, they're not proposing to necessarily do it every night of the week, although every night is proposed to allow greater flexibility of when they can hire talent to come in and perform. Similarly, staff is recommending noise control conditions, again, limiting the hours of entertainment between 6:00 PM and 10:00 PM as the applicant has proposed them. Outdoor live entertainment shall be strictly prohibited and none is proposed at this time. Maximum of two performances per day, up to a maximum of four performers, again, to eliminate the noise. Live entertainment, again, cannot be audible outside the boundaries of the establishment and have to be operate in alignment with all the municipal code requirements regarding noise and vibration. Again, one of the most important ones, all the doors and windows do have to remain closed at all times during live entertainment. Again, separate from someone entering or leaving the establishment, you can't prop the door open. Location and frequency, again, no change in the approved hours or the floor plan for the operation of live entertainment. Any proposed expansion would require an amendment to the CUP and brought back before the commission. Live entertainment would be limited to the 12 feet by 12 feet indoor areas as defined. The DRC shall have authority to remove, I'm sorry, to modify those hours. Similar conditions for public safety, no dancing, standing room only, use of pyrotechnics, and that you have clear visibility into the establishment at all times. This also went to DRC as an advisory review on August 20th. They had practically no discussion and they unanimously voted recommended approval. Following today, to tonight's meeting, there was a postcard notice sent in a 300 foot radius and newspaper notice that was provided. No written or verbal comments have been received for this application at this time, up until this point, as far as I'm aware. With that, staff and the DRC are recommending approval with the conditions as outlined in the staff report. And I myself, as well as Megan, are here if you have any questions, thank you.
Clarifying questions?
Yeah, I have one, so in condition number five, it talks about outdoor. Outdoor live entertainment shall be prohibited at all times unless a request for outdoor live.
Outdoor live entertainment shall be prohibited at all times unless a request for outdoor live entertainment is submitted for review to the Planning Commission and approved by the Planning Commission. Is that similar to other CUPs that we've had? Have we had the same condition and has it always been the Planning Commission rather than the DRC?
So in this particular case, you know, it, it would require a minimum and amendment to the CUP if they were going to propose any expansion to include outdoors, which would have to come before the Planning Commission for review and approval.
Have we had any other cases where we have said outdoor dining, or outdoor live entertainment is prohibited except if approved by?
Not specifically that language. I think, you know, we don't have a lot of dedicated outdoor spaces. Again, the previous application, although not part of this review, is a very unique location. So staff thought it prudent to add a condition to ensure that nothing is proposed at this time and that they cannot provide anything outdoors. And it would, if, if they would provide it in the future, it doesn't just automatically grant them with the CUP. They would have to come back before the commission for approval.
Okay, understood.
Quick question. I saw in your picture of the, or that denotes the stage. To the left, there is a door with panic hardware on it. Is that just an emergency exit? That's not a normal in and out? The most egress is through the front door?
Yeah, I believe it is an emergency. I, I've never used that door. I would probably defer to the applicant. I do know there is an egress pattern for that area. That should, as part of the review and approval, remain open and clear, ADA, everything as such.
Just curious if there was some normal flow, since it's right next to the entertainment area there, that would, would really lead the music to leave the building quickly as opposed to the front. It looked like it had panic hardware on it, so it looked like it was probably an emergency exit.
Any more questions? No, okay, so let's move to the public testimony. So again, this is the time and place for public input regarding public hearing item number three. So we'll accept testimony in the following order. The applicant, persons in favor, persons with concerns, and then the applicant will have a chance to respond. So would the applicant like to come up and speak? And please state your name for the record.
Hi, yes, I am Megan Wentz. I'm the general manager of Barbecue Blues. I do not have much to add. Austin and I have been working very closely together on this permit. I think he's addressed most of your concerns or questions. As far as that side door entrance, yes, it is primarily used very rarely. Occasionally for emergencies, but it's always accessible, always open in case of that case. Other than that, most people do enter from the front. That's not all I have, unless there's any other questions for me.
No, that's it, thank you.
Thank you so much.
So it doesn't look like there's anybody else here to speak, so we'll close the public testimony portion. So let's move now to our discussion and.
It's pretty straightforward.
All right.
I'll just note that the same condition that we struck half of is also present in the CUP about the cover charge.
Yes, number 10. Yes, number 10.
So just to discuss that a little bit more. So I think the sentence that we struck from the last one is this condition does not preclude the applicant from charging an entertainment fee in addition to the sale of food and alcohol. So striking that sentence, at least how I interpret it, doesn't actually change anything about what the applicant can or cannot do. They could still charge an entertainment fee because this sentence says this condition does not preclude the applicant from charging an entertainment fee.
But we were going to strike that whole sentence.
We did, we struck that, that sentence.
Sentence, yes.
Which.
The second sentence.
The whole thing, so it'll say, no cover charge to enter the restaurant shall be permitted.
Period.
Period.
Right, and, and this, the second part is the part that we struck.
Right.
Which I believe doesn't actually change anything that the applicant is allowed to do or not. Is that right?
Yes, that's correct. Essentially, in case there is confusion about a cover charge versus an entertainment fee, the current language clarifies that an entertainment fee is distinct from a cover charge and that no cover charge is permitted, but an entertainment fee is permitted.
And it still is.
It's, it still is, it's just not clarified in the condition.
I should have said this during the discussion in the last one.
Now I understand what you're saying. We should have said.
Or.
We should have said.
Or cover charge.
Or cover charge, yeah, no cover charge or entertainment fee to enter, yeah.
Or perhaps something about being explicit about notifying patrons that an entertainment fee would be charged at the time of entrance of the, on the premises or something like that, if that was your concern.
And I don't know that we have, if, I don't know that we can tell a business how to run their business. That's not really our purview.
Yeah, I'll just add that I think that condition might, staff might have added additional language. So that condition, I know we had in an entertainment facility request as opposed to a restaurant that's using incidental entertainment.
Like the Crimson.
The Crimson.
That's what they were doing.
Exactly, and, and so they were going to add an entertainment fee and the city didn't want that entertainment fee to be a cover charge. The, the purpose of, so, so. Staff is comfortable without having that second sentence. I think the intent is we don't want this to become a bar, a place where there is a cover charge or people.
And somebody standing at the door.
Correct.
Yes, yes. But in my estimation, then, it's no longer a restaurant. It then becomes a nightclub or something.
Correct.
Yes, so it would, it wouldn't fall into the CUP if that indeed was to happen.
That is correct.
Okay, so that kind of covers us, I'm thinking.
So we're fine then with just striking the second sentence and keeping the first sentence?
Are you okay with that?
I was just making an observation. I don't have a strong opinion either way.
Do we want to discuss it more or someone want to make a motion to approve as amended?
Okay, well, I'll move that we approve conditional use permit 2025-0009 with conditions as presented and the amendment to number 10.
Second?
Second.
Roll call, please. Commissioner Austin?
Yes.
Rose?
Yes.
Scheffler?
Yes.
Stahira?
Yes.
Chair Brown?
Yes.
So the motion is approved. And now we'll do the appeal language.
Yes, thank you, Chair. All items of the Planning Commission may be appealed to the City Council if filed in writing within 10 days and an appeal fee does apply. Thank you.
Thank you. So we don't have any administrative reports, so we're going to move to the Community Development Director Report.
Yes, thank you very much. Happy to be with you this meeting. Apologize for missing the last one. Would you have a few updates? We talked about the Monrovia Area Partnership Leadership Academies. We had intended for those to start already. We've recently changed the dates in order to facilitate additional enrollment. So the programming will now start August 1st for the youth, August 2nd for the adult academies. You can.
August?
I'm so sorry, October. I do that all the time, October and August. October 1st for the youth, October 2nd for the adult academies. City Manager's weekly update has information regarding the registration as well as the city's website. We encourage to spread the word. If you've attended and enjoyed it, please pass that information on. It's a great opportunity. I also wanted to note that the density bonus ordinance will be moving on to the City Council next week at their September 16th meeting. And the, myself, John Mayer, and our senior planner, Jennifer Driver, will be attending a Cal APA conference at the end of this month. And it's a great opportunity for us to get, to learn a lot about the new legislation that's coming. We can, we get to interface with HCD oftentimes in other cities, so we're all looking forward to that. So hopefully we can report back what we've learned at that conference at the next meeting. And that concludes my update, thank you.
Thank you. Do we have any reports, announcements, or requests from Commissioners? None? Have here any items to be placed on future agendas or to be addressed by the staff? Nothing? Okay, so I think we're adjourning. Yeah, so our next regular meeting is scheduled for October 15th. And so the meeting is now adjourned at 8:31 p.m. Thank you. Oh, I forget. There we go.